It is now 6:33 on Tuesday, August 18th. I'd like to call to order this early special session for early special board meeting, business meeting, sorry, starting at 6:30. Roll call, please, Ruth Ann.
Member Carter?
Here.
Member Demmett?
Here.
Member Patton?
Here.
Member Plasky is absent this evening. Member Fisher is here, Vice President Exum. Oh. There we go.
Here she goes.
Can't hear you.
Here.
There she goes.
Okay, and President Hall?
Here. Okay, so all are present apart from Board Member Plasky, who has an engagement this evening. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications for tonight's agenda?
Nope.
Nope? Okay, with that, I'd like to make a call to go into executive session.
We need a motion to approve the agenda.
We need a motion to approve the agenda tonight, I'm sorry, you're right, I skipped over four.
We'll move that.
Second it.
Moved in second, and roll call, please?
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes, okay, agenda is approved, and now I'd like to make a call to go into executive session for the purpose of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call, please?
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
For Patton?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes, we'll be in closed session now, and hopefully be able to go back into open at 7:30. It's now 8:08 PM, and I'm sorry to all the public that our meeting took a little longer than we expected, but we are now back in open session. And before I start, I-
You're frozen up, Ann. And you're frozen.
Coming back on, but just for the sake of reading and getting through this stuff, I want to let people know that. Okay, we have our citizen statements for this evening. Let me get my paperwork here. We have a few. We have one, the first one coming from Christine Janik, I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Dear Board of Education members, I hope you will do the right thing and take advantage of the national momentum for change occurring right now. We need more real, research-backed support for students, not cops in schools. Here in Urbana, there are still vast inequities in the opportunity gap for Black and Latinx students. In Urbana, only 4% of Black and 13% of Hispanic students meet or exceed mathematics performance levels. Yet, 34% of white students meet or exceed mathematics performance levels. Moreover, in Urbana, white students are 2.4 times more likely to be enrolled in at least one AP class than Black students. Despite this, last December, the Urbana School Board of Education approved funding of two full-time armed police officers. The yearly cost to the school district is $321,300. The purpose of these officers is not grounded in research. The evaluation of these officers continues to be completely non-transparent, and their presence in schools contributes to the school-to-prison pipeline. We request the removal of armed police officers from Urbana schools. We request the school board to cancel the contract with the UP, Urbana Police Department, and to instead use these resources to better support Urbana's most vulnerable students. Sincerely, Christine Janik. This next letter also was by Christine Janik, and actually is the same as another one that came from Juliette Larkin-Gilmore. There is a culture of mistrust created by our school board. In August of 2018, board members started a secret investigation of over 20 Black and Latinx staff hires due to concerns with their qualifications, while spending more than $23,000 in attorney fees for a document that was never shared with the public. Furthermore, instead of wasting $321,300 to put armed police in Urbana schools and further contribute to the school-to-prison pipeline, we call for the recruitment of Black educators and the recruitment of bilingual counselors and trauma-informed educators. We are paying close attention to your next moves. Thank you for your time and consideration. Signed, Christine Janik and Juliette Larkin-Gilmore. And this next one comes from Sarah Hoag. Dear USC 116 Board, I'm an Urbana resident and work closely with youth from Urbana Middle School and Urbana High School as an informal educator in mostly after-school programs and supplementary education. I care deeply about the youth of Urbana. Their education and success matters, not just to me personally, but for the whole community. I'm very concerned about some recently published data about the demographics of suspensions. 54% of total suspensions were Black students. 52% of out-of-school suspensions were Black students. USD 116 is 37% Black and 31% White. This further illustrates that Black students are being suspended at higher rates than their white peers. Young Black kids are disproportionately disciplined and pulled out of school for vague disciplinary infractions such as defiance and disorderly conduct and bullying. This suspension data only reaffirms stories that we are hearing about how the classroom is no longer an educational space for all, but has become a carceral space for Black students. I'm not okay with this, neither should any of you. I urge USD 116 to lead on carrying out the following actions. One, remove SROs from Urbana schools. Use these resources to better support Urbana's high-hope students. Here in Urbana, there are still vast inequities in the opportunity gap for Black and Latinx students. In Urbana, only 4% of Black and 13% of Hispanic students meet or exceed mathematics performance levels. Yet, 34% of white students meet or exceed math performance levels. Moreover, in Urbana, white students are 2.4 times more likely to be enrolled, excuse me, in at least one AP class than Black students. Despite this, last December, the Urbana School Board approved funding of two full-time armed police officers. The yearly cost to the school district is $321,300. The purpose of these officers is not grounded in research. The evaluation of these officers continues to be completely non-transparent, and their presence in schools contributes to the school-to-prison pipeline. We request the removal of armed police officers from Urbana schools. We request the school board to cancel the contract with the UPD, and to instead use these resources to better support Urbana's most vulnerable students. Two, recruit Black educators, bilingual counselors, and trauma-informed educators. In a time of a global pandemic, students have and will continue to face traumatic experiences, all the while attending and doing well in school. If we wish to give them the support to succeed and have access to equitable education, we need more trauma-informed educators and counselors, including bilingual counselors, to serve any student in need of support. It is crucial we adjust the school environment to meet the needs of our students so that they can focus on the quality education we provide them. Our students are complex. We should have diversity in the staff and skill to meet and understand these children where they're at. If we want all of our students, including Black and Brown children, to have goals to strive for, we need proper representation among staff who hold leadership roles. Three, define and truly act on anti-racist policies as per 2018's Resolution on Commitment to Racial Equity. Consider the hiring of two full-time SROs shortly after the release of this policy and the most recent suspension data. I question whether the board has actually lived out this resolution. We need action for our children, not just lip service. A statement means nothing unless it is put into action. As the old saying goes, "Actions speak louder than words." Let that be so with USD 116 Board of Education. How we treat the education of our youth reflects the values of a community. We educate our youth into who they become and the kind of society we want to live in. Do we not want an equitable and just society for all? Education can only fulfill its potential as the great equalizer, a force that can overcome differences in privilege and background, when we work to ensure that students are in school every day and receive the support they need to learn and thrive. Let's do right by our children, for the outcomes of their education affect the health of our community. Sincerely, Sarah Hoag. And lastly, we received an anonymous letter that was sent to the district that was received yesterday, and I will make sure to share it all with the rest of the board, but it was not signed, so I don't believe it's our policy to read anonymous letters. Okay, that was the last of our citizen statements. We are now on to 8.0 of the agenda, call for executive session, which we do not have for tonight, after tonight's current meeting. We have no communications, so we'll move on to 10.0 of the agenda, which is administrative reports. And we will start with Riley giving us an update on the Thomas Paine Elementary build plan. So take it away, Riley.
All right, thank you, let me share a screen. And confirm that I successfully did that? Somebody?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so tonight is a continued review of concept options with respect to the Thomas Paine expansion renovation. And primarily, we're going to be, or we are going to be looking at two concept options. And they are basically the concept option two, which was prefaced at our last meeting, which has been revised to reflect both a planning committee comments, or attempts to revise per the planning committee comments, as well as the board comments from our last meeting. So option two revised. And on the right side is a new option four. It was suggested that we take a look at placing the major new addition on the existing building to the north, which would provide us with an opportunity to separate the bus traffic from the parent drop-off. So we've looked at that, and we'll want to talk about that as well. So the goal again tonight is a desired goal would be to reach group consensus on a preference on the scheme and sort of have that scheme serve as the basis for moving forward into the next phase of work. So I'll start with option two. So this is option two revised, again reflecting, hopefully, the comments that have been, that were talked about in the original option two. Note, the first thing to talk about is the revised program amount, which is reflective of the board decision last time to add another kindergarten classroom and first grade classroom. That raised the program to about 68,490 square feet, as opposed to 66,026 feet from before. And this new concept option two then reflects the new programming. This option is delivered in about 68,840 gross square feet, which reflects the two new classrooms. It has about 26,260 of new construction, 6,851 of major renovation, and the balance moderate renovation. And everybody remembers that the blue is new, the red is major renovation, and green is moderate. The best way to do this tonight is probably highlight the changes. So that's what I'll do. Already talked about the program. One of the issues last time was the size of the library. We did do a little study of the existing libraries at the elementary school, and Thomas Paine was short, as some suggested, even with the addition of the stage. So now you will see that the library has expanded south all the way to that corridor, and we would intend to include both the stage and that additional space to the library, netting out about 2,870 square feet, which is as large as Yankee Ridge now. This scheme also cleaned up what I termed last time a dog-leg corridor over here, which will provide better supervision of class, of student movements, particularly from the primary and up to the gym and the multipurpose room. And we created what we have sort of termed a fine arts suite now over here that was part of this redesign of this area. So we have music, drama, art in sort of a suite configuration, and we've added the maker space to that suite, if you will. And that was met with some pretty solid feedback from staff and administration. New restrooms were always going to accompany the new fine arts and gymnasium addition. They used to be over on this side. We have now upsized them a little bit and brought them to the south side in this scheme, which begins to address some comments that we got back, that the capacity, the restrooming capacity for the east wing or the fifth-grade classroom levels was inadequate. So now that set of bathrooms is closer to the fifth grade. And we still have the 3-5 restrooms down here to serve 3-4 down here. And that's also, those restrooms are also in a pretty good position now to serve the gymnasium space, and coming back in from outside, the main movement to the gymnasium will be front door here and here. So I think those restrooms are now in a better location. Another suggestion that was proposed last time, whoops, sorry, was the idea that we would push more support space up against the existing courtyard such that we could get the classrooms with better exposure onto the, in this case, the west. So now we have the teachers lounge, those support offices that we've talked about before, and the sped, the intermediate sped classrooms along that courtyard. And now all of the classrooms have a good natural light and exposure such that any activity in this courtyard wouldn't disturb ongoing activities in the classrooms. Speaking of the courtyard, we we're suggesting that that exterior courtyard remains, but that it becomes something different than it is today. This goes along with moving the sensory garden outside the classroom, outside the building. So we envision a accessible and more hard-surfaced exterior courtyard with some minimal landscaping within it, not the sensory garden. And it could be a flexible use space, which would include maybe alfresco break, alfresco dining, alfresco small meetings, even educational endeavors. But it would be, it would be a more useful space, and it would still allow then the natural light to come into the clear-story windows that have, that impact the fifth-grade corridor and the windows that we'll still have for all of these functions along the west side of the space. I mentioned the shift of the sensory garden. I'll move to the site real quickly here. Recall that we have paired option, we paired option two building with option three site, and that's what concept option two revised does. So we still have, we still have a service drive. We have some parking spaces and a turnaround space for loading and deliveries. Here, we still have our 68 total parking spaces on the west side. We still have the parent drop-off. We have the diagonal parking that we settled on last time, and we have the median that truly separates the bus traffic from the other traffic in this area. We are proposing with this scheme that the sensory garden move out to this location just to the west of the staff parking area along an existing concrete walkway that was originally intended to connect with the park district walkway, which I think we've heard they're not going to do, but that's some infrastructure that we have there. The idea being that the new sensory garden might actually become a feature for the Thomas Paine School in that it could be a fenced-in area. The blue, the little blue rectangle there shows the shed that was requested, and maybe there is a walkthrough path for both maintaining the sensory garden and maybe walking classes through the sensory garden. An alternative location for the sensory garden could be to the south of the existing original building as well. Another point to be made about this scheme is while we are adding on to the kindergarten, or the primary wing here, the kindergarten playground will still be in play in this same location. It will have to be improved, but it doesn't have to be totally relocated. And the same thing with the 3-5 playground. So quickly, with respect to concept option two revised, again, here are some pros and cons to cede the discussion, not claiming that these are all the pros or all the cons, but believe option two revised is a compact layout. It minimizes the travel distances of the kids, particularly as they move to the gym, fine arts, and multipurpose. There's good separation of K-2, 3-5 movements, as you can see. The sped classrooms are integrated with both primary and the intermediate classrooms quite well. And as I mentioned, the K-2 and 3-5 playgrounds require improvements, but not total relocation. The other thing that's maybe worth mentioning on option two here is now that we've expanded the building and expanded the budget, you know, can we design this such that it has alternate bids? Or nobody would like this, but could it be phased if we can't afford all of it in one lump sum? So I'm going to go back to the floor plan to talk about this a little bit. So you can see in this floor plan, we can easily create an alternate bid for the new two classrooms that we added at our last meeting. And in fact, that whole classroom addition could be designed as an alternate bid, or two alternate bids, as the case may be. This going a little further, the project could be implemented with just the fine art classroom and gymnasium improvements, and not any of the classroom improvements. So the point being, if there is, if there is cost management challenges for us, this is a decent scheme to be able to address those in terms of alternate bids and phasing. Concept option four, the new one, attempting to explore bringing the major addition down to the north end with the idea that it helps to create a truly separate bus staging area. This scheme is characterized by placing the fine arts classrooms, the gymnasium and stage, and several of the primary classrooms and a relocated new office area in the new addition. The office area is shown here, which kind of establishes a new entry here. That office could also be over at this end, and with the classrooms back on this end as an alternative. The multipurpose room stays where it is. The library expands in the same manner as it did in the previous option. The south end of the building remains much like you see it also in the other option with the third, fourth, fifth grade classrooms, the sped classrooms, the teachers' area, some other support area, and the support offices back where the old main office used to be. Same approach to the existing courtyard. Make it accessible, make it more hard-surfaced with some strategic landscaping and for flexible use, and move the sensory garden outside the perimeter of the existing building. The option four site. You see that this allows a new drive to be created for strictly bus traffic and bus staging to deliver students at this point. The parent drop-off remains the same, but it's obviously segregated from the bus traffic for the most part, except at the entry. Reminding you that we have equalized the number of parking spaces in both schemes to 68 total. But that's not to say that it couldn't be more in both schemes, because we're obviously, we were proposing to restore some of the existing parking area back to green in both schemes. So we have, in this case, we have some diagonal parking adjacent to what could be a possible new entry near the office, and we've reorganized some of the existing parking and probably resurfaced it to provide more parking close to that entrance, which might serve events at the gymnasium. So with respect to cap, option number four, again, pros and cons. Not claiming that these are every one, but the pro for option four is it is less new construction by a margin, by a relatively minor margin. There's less major renovation, again, by a relatively minor amount. We still have reasonably good proximity of the primary classrooms with one another and the intermediate classrooms with one another. We still have pretty good integration of the sped classrooms in each case. We do create the separate gym entrance on the north, which may be useful for events, maybe useful for park district activities within our gym. And I would say better separation of the bus and parent drop-offs. Although I would refresh your memories that I think the previous scheme also does a pretty good job of now separating bus and parent traffic. Cons, clearly longer travel distances in this scheme. Really, a lack of separation of K-2 and 3-5 movements, student movements, teacher and student movements. Obviously, you can see the primary wing is remote from the multipurpose cafeteria and would pass through intermediate territory. The intermediate wing is remote from the gym and fine arts and would pass across primary classrooms on their way there. The extra paving on the site is acknowledged here to create a separate bus lane. We would need a separate paving. In this scheme, both K-2 and 3-5 playgrounds do require relocation to the east. I think in this case, the primary wing is probably a bit more remote from the K-2 playground. And I would say that this scheme is not as good for trying to develop alternate bids or make it, make it deliverable in phases. This scheme does not address the east wing bathroom capacity that I mentioned in the previous scheme. Had a lot of feedback on the need for more restroom capacity to serve there. And it too provides a minor impact on the existing tree growth. So that leads us to the budgets. Option two revised is now 13,120, or 13.1 million. Option two revised is now thirteen, one, twenty or thirteen point one million. That's about a seven hundred thousand dollar increase over the original option two that we discussed a couple of weeks ago. And option four, because of its less amount of construction comes in about has less building construction, more site work comes in about twelve point eight four million. That's about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars less than this scheme. So again, I want to remind you, these are just cursory square foot costs and percentage based estimates to compare schemes. And they aren't not not ready to commit a budget on, obviously. And you see the comparative cost with Yankee Ridge again. And then all of these materials were presented to the planning committee already. And they landed back on option two as their preference. So that was the quick overview of everything and I'm more than happy to answer any questions or talk about things that I missed.
I have comments, Anne. May I go ahead? May I go ahead, Anne? I could. Okay. A couple of other observations between two and four. I think that despite our best planning, we ended up with basically two front doors to King School. And option four to me would present the same conundrum as we ended up with at King in that no matter where you put the office, it's going to be separate from one of the main entrances. And so it makes it more difficult to, in this day and age of of safety issues, it's pretty clear that the current main entrance of of an option two. The current main entrance of the school will continue to be where it is today. And I think option four spreads that out a little bit. I'm also troubled by separating the gym from the multipurpose center in that yeah, the gym would be available for events, but the idea of being able to use two of the large spaces for combination of physical activity and meal in some kind of an evening event or after school event begins to is heavily dissipated when you look at at option four. So I would, even though it's a little bit more expensive, that expense could easily be rectified by not having a fourth kindergarten or a fourth first grade room. Would bring the two cost estimates in pretty close proximity to each other. So I would continue to offer to favor two revised as well for those reasons, unless you have counterpoints Riley to what I raised.
No, I would I would agree with that. My my gut tells me that we're using existing infrastructure more efficiently in option two. And you're right, I I I think then from a security standpoint, there is at least one less entry point in option two versus option four. And it, I think it it just lends itself to a single point of entry at the existing entry as you are describing.
Yeah, and I have a third point too, which is that option two is more compact, has less external walls. And so from a viewpoint of energy efficiency, option two is going to be a little easier on the on the heating and cooling budget than option four would be when you spread the building out as much as option four does with all those external walls. That's just more opportunities for cold in the winter for cold air to infiltrate or for in the summer for hot air to infiltrate that you tend to eliminate when you keep the design a little bit more compact.
Agreed.
But I think if even if it costs us more to do two than four, over time from operational viewpoint, we'd recover the money pretty rapidly.
Yeah, I think that's true. And and as well from an educational programming standpoint, less travel distance and more efficient movements and more quick movements leads to more classroom time.
Yeah, this is Peggy. I too prefer concept, the revised concept two for the reasons John stated, and it's just a more logical flow of of classroom space. But I would certainly favor considering alternate bids on the additional K one classroom that we added since the first concept two was discussed. It would be easy to to lop on there at the end of the the diagram and it would be, if we can't do additional at this time, it would be easy to add on. So I would certainly favor pulling out those alternate big options and in in the revised concept two.
Yeah, and and it is readily done in in concept option two. Another, and I know we don't like to talk about not delivering a full project to the district, but another option, probably in both schemes, but it sounds like we're talking about option two more often. The fact that we have all of that site improvement work to the west of the building that the truth is, and maybe I mentioned this last time, you could defer that site work and we could live with what we have maybe with better supervision if we had to save money. Maybe maybe the money would be applied to the building and we could defer the site work to the future. If if we got caught in a budget crunch.
Agreed.
Other comments?
I just had a couple of quick ones. I really liked option two, like John said, it is very compact, but a couple of concerns that I had is the parking spaces compared to option four. The paper I have, which could be an older one, I don't know where if you've added more parking spaces, but it says that there's a total of sixty four parking spaces.
Yeah, that actually, Brenda, we corrected that from last time. We have sixty eight in in both schemes.
In both schemes, okay. And then my only other concern is just about how the parking, the flow of the parking because that had been a real problem in the past. And I just want to make sure that people are going to be safe, you know, with signage and everything on where they could drive at and but other than that, I I really like option two. But the that was my only concern is the part, you know, the parking spaces. But if you were able to get sixty eight, that's great. And then, you know, just about the traffic flow with the buses and everything and the parent drop off.
Yeah, I I believe we discussed traffic. We had a number of options last time. And we discussed the traffic flow and the potential conflict between not only buses but parent staff, visitors and parent drop off. I think we settled on option three as having the greatest safety potential. And we'll we'll dig into that more as we do more detailed design work.
Thank you.
What I haven't heard from anybody is any thoughts about the sensory garden in our proposed relocation outside the building. Any thoughts from anybody?
I probably prefer the section, the the one that's up closer to the building on the south side of the building. But that's just a very personal observation. I think the people that maintain the sensory garden are probably going to have a lot more to say about this than anybody else. Or maybe Randy, who is our groundskeeper, in charge of the groundskeeping group that might have. Randy Ashman might have some comments about if the if the if the maintenance, which is volunteer, if the maintenance of the sensory garden falls off. It leaves a little bit more of an eyesore when it's there along that walkway than it does when it's up against the building on the south side of the building. And because that is volunteer maintained, some years it's going to be great, some years it might not be so.
I'll give that some more thought as we march forward.
Especially with the presence of the shed. Out along the walkway, it's probably a little bit more if that sheds up against the building.
Okay.
A little bit more secure.
Well, we have options. And we can continue to explore those.
I do appreciate you rerouted the the walkway to the 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 mile long.
Yeah, thank you, Jen. I forgot to mention that both schemes have some adjustment to the Sandy Cooper walkway, but not not too bad.
Well, I have a question about the sensory garden. If we, just for the sake of argument, we had it off of the parking lot on the west side. Is that sidewalk, that white sidewalk that leads off the map to the west, is that a public access sidewalk? I mean, is that would that mean that the sensory garden, if we had it in the west, would be more accessible to the general public? Because that would be an argument for me against putting it there. And like John said, and other people said, being on the south side means it's closer, it's better maintained. But i- is that something that just people who live in the subdivision could walk through?
It goes, it goes to the apartment complex immediately to the west. It's the main traffic way from the apartment for students. Primarily a student.
But it, yeah, it actually stops before it gets there, though, I think. And my understanding of the sensory garden is that it needs to be fenced regardless of its location. It needs a storage shed of some kind and and it would need water taken to the area.
Well, then I I'm more in favor of keeping it on the south side because for all those reasons and also for the reason that you had suggested that there might be opportunities for people to, you know, go out there with classes and things. It just makes sense to keep it closer to the school. I wanted to comment on one thing I I don't know if it's possible at all. But the one thing about number four that I really liked was the bus drop off. I just like having that separate artery of traffic there that is not going to interfere with the daily parent drop off and, you know, pedestrians and stuff. And I don't know if that is a benefit to, if people, you know, really like that as well. If, is there any way that that could be incorporated in a concept two? The one that that runs from east to west, the bus drop off. It would it would change the size and the shape of the cave through playground improvement that you've got on concept two. If you had to, if you could keep the playground there, it would probably have to be elongated east, west rather than north, south. But I don't even know, is it possible to put a bus drop off lane in in concept two?
We'd have traffic that would be in the main driveway that we it would be working against each other. Because now you've shortened up the space from out at the street going closer to the building. And you have more driveway space that the buses would need to come into and working against traffic to then turn to the left to get on to the the drop off lane. I mean, the first thing that I saw was, oh, my gosh, I love two, but I've got to have that drop off lane until I started paying attention to just graphically where that lane would be closer to the building. When we're not adding, you know, leaving it the way it is, there's there's just a way that it's not going to work.
Okay, so that you you're kind of partially answering a question then. If in the, if the bus drop off lane is used there that's running east to west, would the buses enter off Florida Avenue on the west side? Would they would they enter the park where the parking lot loops down to the west and then circle around? Or would they just enter straight where the word staff and visitor parking is and then make a hard left to be in that lane? I guess that's what I was wondering is would it interfere with car? Because if they just did that, if they just went, came in off Florida Avenue and made a hard left, would they really be interfering with parents coming in too because they come at different times?
Yeah.
Well, think about one side of the bus the door is on for the kids to exit. So you need the right hand side of the bus to be facing the school. So kids aren't aren't walking around the bus to get to the school.
But so that would mean that they would enter off Florida Avenue on the on the west side of the the they would drive straight in and they would point their noses to the east. The buses would point their noses to the east again along that corridor, but that would leave all the rest of the parking areas open for parents to loop around and drop the kids off, right? Or am I just looking at this completely wrong?
Yeah, but it does introduce some additional turning conflicts as they're turning across traffic somewhere along the line.
Yeah, I guess you're right. Yeah.
If I was in the boardroom, yeah, if I was in the boardroom, Anne, I'd be leaning over and showing you the the distance from the sidewalk out on Florida and where the, you know, the building is. I can show you.
And I appreciate the design on two of getting rid of the fact that we've got a driveway that goes across the north side of the school building to get back to the get back to the to the kitchen area. And and that means that people have to walk across that driveway to get to the, from the classrooms to get to the playground. And the 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 orange space spaces, the way it's designed on number two on the site plan eliminates that conflict so that no child is having to walk across a driveway to get to a playground.
Well, and I also, what I liked about concept two was that it looks like there's additional parking spaces for service vehicles, which I don't know, I it's been a while since I looked at the parking situation back there in the back of the school where the cafeteria and the playgrounds were, but for delivery trucks and all sorts of stuff, it just, it's nice to have that extra space there. And one thing I didn't like, well, I don't know how deep, how steep the grade is on option four. But I was thinking like on option four where the three to five playground was proposed, how 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 much of a hill are we talking about? Because that could get, if it's down at the bot- towards the bottom of the hill, that could get pretty sloppy with lots of rain and melted snow, but but I'm leaning more towards two. I I and I really do like the change of the parking positions for the cars. That makes a lot more sense. But I would, I would definitely, like I said, vote for keeping the sensory garden on the south side of the building. So it's close by and easy to maintain, easy to keep safe.
The only other addition I would have to the bus lane in being changed in option two is then you would have buses, four or five buses queued up in an east, west direction at the end of the primary wing, which may not be exactly where you want to deposit all the children.
So Riley, one thing that did come up today, I was in a separate conversation with First Student and they shared some of their thoughts. They saw this posted. Is that one point of entry in and out, but I, you know, Carol and I haven't even had a chance to talk about this yet. But I think with with some new systems and new routines in place there, we can help make that a better exit onto Florida Avenue for buses and cars. We just need, you know, we just need some better systems and routines there. I think we can make, we can work internally to make that better.
Yeah, at least, yeah, everything's going in the same direction now.
Yes, yep, yep. I think it'll, I, you know, like even how we did at King, when we would, we would have the crossing guard kind of stop traffic and all the buses would flow out at once. Was one way that we dealt with the circle driving King there. It's a kind of, you know, have just stop traffic and buses can come out and they're not competing with cars to go out when it's time to go out was one thought that I had. But we can work on that internally.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
Historically, Thomas Paine has had the most bus riders. I I believe. And has usually had the most buses, you know, just going to to the site. That generally are always going to be getting there about the same time. Does that sound about right?
Yes.
With my memory and everything. And I believe at one time it it was a constant seven buses. And I believe at one time it, it was a constant seven buses. If anybody, I mean, I'm just wondering, you know, if they're all going to be there at the same time, all just, you know, stacked right on down against the curb, the curbing that goes, you know, all the way in front of the building and out to the sidewalk.
Well, I've been there at dismissal and, well, several times this past year, and they never seemed to have any trouble staging there. There was always enough space, so I think they'll be fine. They, they have a stopping point kind of before that horse or that little jag out, you know, where they, where the cars have to stop right now before they can, they can't go forward and those horses are there. The first bus typically pulls there and then all the other buses stage behind it. So I think they should have enough space. I don't know, I can't think of how many buses that is with them, but I know they seem to fit.
Okay.
In option two, we're, we're providing that median that is truly separating the parking from the bus traffic. And you can see that we're, we can easily stack six buses, we're showing six buses stacked there. And it appears to me you could probably get a seventh in there if you had to.
Probably even more in a tight squeeze.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I've just, I've just noticed something with the barrier. In number two, of course, with the barrier there. And parents dropping off in the circular area. Do the parents now then are, they should not be allowed to go down through like the bus lane or the barrier is, wouldn't you think?
Correct.
While the buses are there, they should be sitting there. Well, is this going to help eliminate having the stop signs out in the parking lot?
Well, you'd still have the stop signs out, Ruth Ann, but they'd be able to go along the west side of the barrier.
Exactly, so they just have, everybody need, parents will need to know that they cannot drop the kids off in the, sort of in the circle drive and then head along between the barrier and the buses.
Sure they can, because the barrier is what separates the bus traffic from the car traffic. So they go on the south, on the west side.
On the west side, they'd have to come over to the west side. They wouldn't be able to be on the east side of the barrier.
Yeah, this is the same, this is the same separation we're calling for in the secondary land use plan. Where we have a bus lane with just a barrier to, between the bus lane and the automobile traffic. And there's room there for a bus to go around the other bus.
Oh, yeah, most definitely. They would be able to pull out and leave once they're emptied out or filled up and ready to move at the end of the day.
I think this actually eliminates as many turning conflicts as we could possibly eliminate.
True. I like the number two revision. When you're stacking the gymnasium and the other classrooms down at the north end, it's then projecting out to the east. And then you have a lot of hiding area back behind there to the south along the service drive. And that's just, that's just my safety mind. Looking at that so that there's, oh, I can't quite explain what is I'm saying. It's a blind area. There's the terminology that I need in four, when we're looking at four and putting the gymnasium in that area. Now we have a blind area to the south of the gym outside. And that service drive is there. At safety point, security point, it's, I don't care for it. You know, that, that would be a, a big con for me if I was, you know, considering number four, but I, I'm, I'm all about number two with the revisions.
Any other comments from anyone or any other questions?
Oh, I want to say one other thing, since that's out in my neighborhood, just, you know, walking distance and whatever. It is, it's very easy, very simple for the neighborhood children and families to use the playground at the north end. It's used just evenings or over the weekends and everything. And the positioning of that playground out there near Florida Avenue, it gets used. It, it really does. It's very easy to get to. Instead of having to go back and around into the other areas that aren't, you know, as secure, you know, from seeing things from the road.
Good point.
That is a good point. And, and in fact, we've talked about some safety issues associated with the K two playground in that area. And I think we landed on the fact that that would probably have to be a fenced area to protect the children towards Florida or any other driveways.
Like it's fenced now. It's fenced on Florida Avenue now.
Yeah.
Yes.
I remember somebody telling me that there is still a way that the children could wander from the existing, but we'll look at that in detail and make sure that that can't happen.
I think the last major advantage for option two is that all the parts of the school building that are used by every student are really in the center core of the building. Starting from the west entrance, you've got the office, you go into the library, you go into the multipurpose room, you go into the gym. You're all right there and the fine arts classrooms are all right there. So it's the least amount of walking, least amount of distance. And it's the, the, the core of the building is, is really the, the space that's used by all students, which I think is great.
Well, the other thing I should mention on the library, John and others, as we realized it needed to be expanded, also gives us the opportunity to maybe put some additional entry points to the library space that are, have better proximity to the users. Like that's an entry that will serve the intermediate and classrooms. I believe there might be a single door down in this location right now, but maybe that is expanded into a better entry serving the primary area. And of course, the existing main entrance that we have today would be maintained.
Yeah, help everybody recall what L I T means.
Literacy, storage.
Okay, thank you. Connected to a library.
Yeah.
Okay, no, no other questions or comments or anything? Um, great, well, we, when will we see this next? I'm forgetting my dates for the, for the coming calendar. Are we going to have Riley come back again for a vote on this? Or what's our next plan, somebody?
It shows up, we vote on this as an action item.
It is considered an action item tonight? Oh, it is later in the agenda. Where is it?
Twelve point three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking back at the other ones. Twelve point three, okay. So we can discuss it further, but just any other questions you have for Riley before we deal with it later on the agenda, now's the time. Okay, well, thank you very much, Riley, for the update.
Thank you very much.
Think of anything else between now and when we vote, please write it down. Okay, we'll move on to eleven point O, action items, the consent items. Eleven point one is the approval, and I have to separate all of these out individually, I believe. Or is that still the case? I separate each one of these action items in eleven point O out for votes? Nope, we can vote on.
Single, single motion for the consent agenda, but you need to detail what all is on the consent agenda.
Gotcha, thank you.
Things are long, I'll move the consent. Well, first, we need to find out if anyone wishes to have anything removed from the consent.
That's right. Does anybody wish to have anything separated out from this agenda for eleven point O? The minutes, the June bill checks, the inter fund loans, personnel, graduation list, MTD contracts, disposal of property and administrative personnel item. No? Okay. Okay, so I'll read out the action items and we'll get a motion on the whole thing. First up is minutes for June sixteenth, business meeting, July fourteenth, special meeting, July twentieth, special meeting, August fourth, study session, and the August eleventh, special meeting. Eleven point two is June bills and checks. And the amount of education fund bills, nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Operations and maintenance fund bills and the amount of sixty-four thousand dollars. Bond and interest fund bills and the amount of seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Transportation fund bills and the amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Working cash bonds, forty-three thousand dollars. School facility occupancy tax, fourteen thousand dollars. Tort, fourteen thousand dollars and payroll, four million. For July bills and checks, the ed fund bills and the amount of seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. O and M fund bills and the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Bond and interest fund bills, one thousand, one hundred dollars. Transportation fund and the amount of seventeen, is eighteen hundred dollars. Working cash bonds and the amount of forty-three thousand. School facility occupancy tax and the amount of eleven thousand. Tort, one hundred and fifty-two thousand. And payroll, three million. And, oh, and the Urbana adult education for June and July both in one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. We have no inter fund loans to report. Eleven point four, before we, I do have Angie who would like to make a statement about that. I hope it's okay if I go ahead and do that now for our personnel items for tonight. Is now, Angie?
Sure, we just want to give a special recognition to Diane Jackson. She's our purchasing agent. And she is retiring from the district in October. And so we are in the midst of hiring her replacement. She has worked in the district for twenty-six and a half years. Prior to coming to the district, she had a position in the military. And she has sold her home here in our community. And she's moving back to her original living area, which was Pennsylvania. And so we wish her the best and she's been a great asset to central office and to our district. And so we just wanted to give her a quick shout out. And for those of you who have been at central office and had met her service dog Penny, she had already transitioned out maybe about a month ago. And so we miss Penny as well, but both have, will be moving on. And so we wish Diane the very best.
Is there a way that we could ask for her replacement to also come with a very cute dog?
I would love that.
Penny, Penny was very sweet, but thank you. No, I thank you very much. That was really nice and we'll miss her. Okay, so and then next up, we do have the list of the 2020 Urbana High School graduates, which we always approve at this time of the year. But unfortunately, we never got a chance to see them off in person when they graduated. So congratulations, class of 2020. We will miss you terribly. And you had left some extremely large shoes to fill, I have to say myself. I'm completely impartial on this, but we'll, we'll miss you. We hope you're already moving on to better things. Eleven point six, the renewal of the MTD contract. And I don't know if Carol has anything that she wants to add to this one.
Uh, no, it's just no increase, so same amount as last year.
Eleven point seven is the resolution authorizing the directing, authorizing and directing the sale or disposal of personal property, which I think was a piano, some file cabinets and a bunch of radios that don't work anymore. And then lastly, we have one administrative personnel item of retirement or movement on the list. And that's, sorry?
It was a resignation.
A resignation, thank you, sorry. Is there anything else that needs to be said about any of these items before we make a motion? Nope, okay, do I have a motion to approve the action items?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second bat.
Moved in second and roll call, please, Ruth Ann.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes, item passed. Okay, next up, we have individual action items in twelve point O. The first up in the gifts, we have from Rose Babich. I hope I pronounced her name correctly, but she donated forty-five dollars and fifty-three cents to the district to help feed the children. We have the following citizens who donated to the Karen De Bush Trust account in the total of two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. Lisa Bouillon Diaz, Ryan and Victoria Hart, Julia and Mark Zavilius, Marcia Burns, Janelle Weaver, Scott Paluska, Margaret Fleck, Kathleen Harvey, Thomas and Stephanie Nevins and Cornelia Oats, Oatness, I'm sorry if I mispronounced any names there. Onus, thank you. Onit. Got it, I got it eventually, sorry. Allison James and Alden O'Dwyer donated a hundred dollars to the Willie T Somerville Scholarship. And Margaret Grossman of Urbana donated a bag of used strings, a small suitcase full of violin parts, and a variety of five violins and five bows to Urbana High School Teacher Strings Program. The following also donated a total of two thousand dollars to the Evelyn Burnett Underwood Scholarship Fund in memory of Nicholas, Nicholas Temporley, Marilyn Reed, Betty Gray Fow, Steve Osborne, Jean and Ellen Amber, Thomas Ullin, Anne Robyn, Eugene Giles, Grayson William Shodel, Lizzie Goldwasser, the Sigma Alpha Iota Urbana Alumni Chapter, and Robin Sanner. I hope I pronounced all those names correctly, thank you. And finally, the United Way of Champaign County donated fifteen thousand dollars to the district for the purchasing school supplies for our students. Do I have a motion to say, to approve all this money and send out thank you notes? So moved?
Second.
Moved in second and roll call, please?
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes, motion passes. We'll send thank you notes. Okay, twelve point two is the amendment to the superintendent's employment agreement. This is regarding goals, salary and vacation. And I need a motion to approve this amendment as requested.
I move to approve the amendment to the superintendent's employment agreement, providing for the carryover of eleven days of vacation to be used by December thirty-first, 2020. The one-time buyback of ten unused vacation days. The revised performance goals for the coming school year and for a salary increase of five thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved in second and, and I think you said that this, the vacation days were to be used by the end of December thirty-first, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Ruth Ann.
For Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes, motion passes. And lastly, we have the approval of the Thomas Paine Elementary Concept Plan. So do we have any discussion before we take the motion on this?
I would move approval of the option two revised.
Second bat.
Okay, and no discussion of any more of option two or option four, we're good with that. We have a motion and a second. Do we have roll call, please, Ruth Ann?
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
For Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes, so Plan Two passes for the motion. Thank you. And thanks, Riley, for all the work you've provided tonight.
Thank you.
Riley.
Thank you. Okay, item thirteen point O, a call for future special or executive meetings, of which I believe we have none at this time. So then we move on to fourteen point O of our agenda, which is FOIA reports. And we have a few, so please, everybody bear with me. Unless, should I read these, Jennifer, or do you want to read them? I'm, I'm happy to read them.
You can read them. Sometimes I, you, you, all right, you're really good at it.
I don't know about that, but, okay. The first from Amina Payne, for more detail on all equipment, the officers required to fulfill their duties at USC one sixteen Um, the first from Amina Payne, for more detail on all equipment, the officers required to fulfill their duties at USD one sixteen schools. The anticipated professional development, as may have been cited by the Urbana Police Department. And how many vehicles SROs have to fulfill their duties at USD one sixteen schools, such as how many vehicles per the forty thousand dollar cost. Also from Amina Payne, uh, an Excel spreadsheet with the costing breakdown as per the email and the attached screenshot. From Amina Payne, all contracts regarding school resource officers at Urbana High School that span the following dates. February fourth, twenty nineteen to June fifteenth, twenty twenty. Between the Urbana School Board members, Urbana Director of Human Resources, Markeisha Parker, and Urbana Chief Financial Officer, Carol Baker. All emails regarding school resource officers at Urbana High School that span the following dates. February fourth, twenty nineteen to June fifteenth, twenty twenty. Between Urbana School Board members, Urbana Director of Human Resources, Markeisha Parker, and Urbana Chief Financial Officer, Carol Baker. From Don Owen, Lead for Equity and Engagement LLC. Student expulsion and suspension information for the twenty-ten, twenty-twenty school year to include. The number of students recommended disaggregated by school year, grade level, gender, race, IEP status and free and reduced lunch status. The reason for expulsion or suspension. The length of expulsion or suspension determination of the board in each case pertaining to expulsion only. And student arrest information for the period twenty-ten, twenty-twenty to include number of students arrested on school grounds. Disaggregated by school year, grade level, gender, race, IEP status and free and reduced lunch status and reason for the arrest. From Lee Victoria Gaines of Illinois Public Media and the Illinois Newsroom. The number of students by school age, gender and race demographic arrested on school property or as a result of incidents on school property for the following school years. Twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And the names of any and all school resource officers working in the district and the school at which they were stationed for each of the above school years. From Don Owen, Lead for Equity and Engagement LLC. Board member names, addresses, years of service and sub-district if applicable for the years from nineteen sixty-six to twenty twenty. And the names of any board members who were appointed rather than elected. And from Jen Lask of WCIA. All documented electronic and written communications that were submitted to be read as citizen statements. And finally from Ken Deloyan from Smart Procure, the quarterly purchasing and vendor information. So do we have all those in hand and, uh, sent out?
Yes.
Okay. Um, lastly, we have the superintendent's report. Now I will shut up and let Jennifer take the floor.
This will be quick. So, um, hopefully in the future, when I bring superintendent reports, I'll be able to share all the wonderful. Uh, creative and innovative things that our teachers are going to be doing during remote learn, this period of remote learning. Uh, but since we have not started that yet, I wanted to just bring back the calendar again. And, um, I, I shared this with you guys earlier with the note that, um, we're not voting on it tonight because we're not going to resubmit it to the ROE. We're going to wait to the end of the year to submit a final calendar. Our, our initial calendar has already been approved once. Um, this is just more for us, um, internally to be able to share with parents. Um, and to post on our website. It reflects the, uh, approved changes for all remote learning for the first quarter. So if you, um, will note here, the remote learning planning days this week. Um, we will begin sharing remote learning activities with students Monday, the twenty-fourth. Um, we did take off the times for the, uh, staff development day for the first quarter because students won't be attending in person. So they won't, we won't have those dismissal times. And we also made a note to reflect, uh, that parent teacher conferences will be held virtually. And remotely and we'll share information, uh, with families about that. One additional change that we did, um, make to this calendar is since election day is now a school holiday in Illinois. Um, we did, uh, kind of, uh, change the staff development day. The staff development day was prior to, um, Friday. I think it was October thirty-first or October thirtieth. And we moved it to this Monday. Um, so students and staff don't have to come. They have staff development day on Friday and then come to school Monday and then have an election day off. So we're pairing these two together, which is a change. Um, a minor change, but just something we've done to just make some continuity in the schedule there. So no other changes were made, um, in the rest of the calendar, except. We did have to add a day at the end of the year. Um, just to make up some, to make sure we had our hundred and seventy-six days with all the other remote learning planning changes that we made at the beginning of the year. So this is more informational at this point. Um, I did want the board to see it before we share it publicly. Um, and we'll be adding this to the website and making sure that people are really clear about the expectations for first quarter and. Um, all the remote activities leading up to that. Questions or comments? Okay. That is it for the superintendent report.
Okay, I'll mute myself there. Okay, great. Board reports. Unmute yourself Ruth Ann.
Oh, Anne, can I say one more thing?
Yes, absolutely.
I wanted to publicly thank Anne for joining us for our opening day yesterday.
Oh.
She did a great job. We had, um, it was a very unusual opening day because we had all these many Zoom groups. And Anne joined us, uh, for the first session, just as the board president always does. And I'm, I'm sorry that it was your first time and we didn't get to be in the gym and, and really celebrate our beginning back to school year. But Anne did a great job welcoming all the teachers and we recorded her. And then we played it back for all the mini groups. We had about five different groups that we zoomed with and welcomed them back to the beginning of the school year. So thank you Anne for that. And we had a great day too. Um, it was a lot of really good professional learning and very unusual day. Doing it all through these little mini Zooms, but I wanted to thank you for doing that. I know staff appreciated your well wishes as well.
Well, thank you. I guess I, it was. It's always hard in Zoom and especially I was so excited about being able to do it in front of a huge crowd. And get the vibe off the crowd because I've heard it can be kind of fun, but, um, and then I panicked the night before because I got the email that said. That it was going to be different schools, a different Zoom meetings. And I thought, oh my gosh, do I have to give the speech, the same speech over and over and over again, five times? But no, it was recorded and it was replayed. So it went well. I'm, I'm glad it was a good day and I, I hope the whole rest of the week goes really well for everybody. Sorry to barge in. Ruth Ann, you were going to say something and thank you Jennifer for the calendar and for those nice thoughts. Um, do we have any board reports now?
I kind of guess so. Uh, something popped up on my Facebook memories. And it's been seven years since we opened the early childhood school. Seven years. Has it really been seven years? Facebook says it's been seven years since I posted all the pictures that I took that day. But that beautiful facility is already seven years old. I, it's. And it just stands so proud out there on, on East Washington. I just love going by it when I'm heading out for Walmart.
I guess some of those graduates from that first year would be getting close to the end of their elementary careers now, huh? Any other board reports for tonight? No? Okay. Seeing none? Sorry?
Move we adjourn.
Okay, motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call please Ruth Ann. Or do we just, yes?
Yes.
Member Carter and.
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes. Thank you everyone. We are adjourned.
I'll vote yes too.
Oh, oh, did I miss you?
Sorry, now we're adjourned.